Time is seven PM. I'll call to order the city of Torrington planning and zoning commission meeting for November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four. Attendances by Zoomer in person to City Hall Auditorium, room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for Zoom are available online at www.torringtonct.org/zoom. There's a link there to join the meeting. You can call in at one six four six five five eight eighty six fifty six, meeting ID seven ninety five dash nine fifty dash seventy thirty five, passcode is nine zero seven one four eight. Moving on to agenda item number two, attendance serving on the commission this evening is Donna Greco, Starlee Arias, who is a seated member this evening, Diane Carroll, who is also seated this evening. Myself, Greg Mealy, also in attendance is our city planner, Jeremy Leifert. Moving on to agenda item number three, minutes for approval, A, September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Close, so moved. Minutes for approval, three B, October ninth, we're gonna hold off on those. Jeremy's still generating those, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number four, public hearings, there are none this evening. Five, old business. A, site plan application, number fifteen thirty five. Location, one sixty Church Street, assessors map, one seventeen block zero zero six, lot zero zero seven. One sixty eight Church Street, assessors map, one eighteen block zero zero two, lot zero zero nine. Applicant is the city of Torrington Engineering Public Works. Proposal, site development of parkland, parking lot, and multi-use trail. Is the applicant in attendance, please?
How are you, Paul?
Good, thank you. Thank you for entertaining this application. I'm Paul Hudson, city of Torrington City Engineer. And to give you a little background on this project, this site application is actually a part of a larger development that the city is currently underway, which is, as mentioned in Jeremy's memo, the Railroad Square Revitalization Project. So that includes a multi-use trail on John Street that continues on Church and into this particular section before you. And also it includes the reconstruction of Water Street and Church Street and the development of the Franklin Products Parking Lot and a railway platform canopy. The whole project is designed to revitalize the area, to bring in more people from Thomason and the train, and to get people to revitalize the whole area, that vacant lot, the old train station, the Kelly Bus property, and bring everything somewhat together as a new part of town. The application before you utilizes two vacant parcel, two parcels that are currently vacant around the Christmas Village property. And one is to the side that parallels the railway tracks and the other piece, and that's one sixty Church Street. The one sixty eight is a parcel in behind Christmas Village. And so in looking at the whole project, we realized that we wanted to continue the multi-use trail. It's actually part of the Sue Grossman Trail, the larger picture of getting from downtown to the north. And this gets us one step closer. The trail will parallel the railway tracks from Church to the parking lot in the rear. The parking lot in the rear will serve as not only a trailhead and parking for the trail, but also as a, the intent is to take some overflow from the Mason Street Parking Lot and provide a day use parking for the Vogel Wetmore teachers. That will then free up the spaces in the Mason Street Parking Lot for Pubmor for public use. So there's a twofold process there. The one sixty piece will also allow us to develop, there's a small grass area between beside Christmas Village and the tracks in the front there, into a small pocket park. And again, that will, that will serve as a, almost a gateway for the trail. It will also serve as an amenity for Christmas Village with new programming, year-round programming for Christmas Village that we're trying to establish. It will give us the ability to utilize, to have a little bit of extra space for, say, for instance, food trucks or places for people to gather while they're using the Christmas Village property, whether it's, you know, to wait to get in to see Santa or, you know, or even in the summer, whenever we have other events like Christmas in July and what have you. So that's pretty much the the intent of this application, to use these vacant parcels to the best of our potential. And so the parking lot itself in the rear, it will be paved, it will be asphalt. It'll be, there'll be landscaping, there's, there's full landscaping, there's buffer areas around all the all the adjacent properties. And, you know, we're gonna try to make it, to make it look as, as nice as we can, as inviting, and yet still have it blend in with the surroundings. There will be privacy fences on the property to the north to supplement what's already there. And, and yeah, the pocket park in the front will also have, there's, there's a, there's a option there for a pavilion, even public restrooms. And like I said, an area for what could be utilized as food trucks for, to support the events. So I think that's, that's pretty much an overview of the, of the project.
Thank you, Paul. Any commissioners have any questions? Jeremy, you wanna dive into your memo?
Yeah.
Please.
The city of Torrington Engineering Public Works Department has filed site plan application number fifteen thirty five for property located at one sixty and one sixty eight Church Street. Tax assessor map, one seventeen, block zero zero six, lot zero zero seven, and map one eighteen, block zero zero, one eighteen, block zero zero two, lot zero zero nine, for development of parkland and amenities, parking lot development, and future multi-use trail construction. One sixty Church Street, which directly fronts Church Street, is proposed to be used for various park amenities, including a pavilion, picnic tables, restrooms, and multi-use greenway trail development. The lot behind Christmas Village, the Christmas Village property known as one sixty eight Church Street, is proposed to be used for public parking and multi-use greenway trail development. This project is a portion of an overall area development project known as the Railroad Square Revitalization Project. The properties are owned by the city of Torrington, are zero point four two acres and zero point nine two acres in area respectively, and are located in the DD Downtown District Zone. The proposed use of the property for parks, parking lot, and trail use are conforming uses by site plan approval under zoning regulations, section three point one, table of permitted uses, subsection nine point one zero parking lots, and subsection eighteen point zero zero building in uses by the city of Torrington. The properties were acquired by the city by donation in two thousand and eighteen. A nineteen ninety eight application by the previous owner to change the zone of these properties from R six residential to industrial was denied. An application to change the zone from R six residential to DD Downtown District was approved in September, two thousand and twenty four, and became effective on October third, two thousand and twenty four. The review of this project is guided by the site plan regulations of section eight point four of the city of Torrington zoning regulations and the parking regulations in section five point one three of the regulations. As this review is by site plan approval under section three point one of the regulations, no public hearing is required for review of this plan. Plans submitted are titled Railroad Square Revitalization, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, zero six seven nine zero, final design submission by SLR Consulting, Chester, Chester, Connecticut, dated September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four, sixteen sheets. Staff has met previously with city representatives to discuss and review the project prior to this meeting. In reviewing the plans and documents, I have the following comments. One, this application includes the use of one sixty eight Church Street to the rear of the existing Christmas Village property as a public parking lot. There are no minimum or maximum parking requirements as this property is in the DD Downtown District Zone. Two, travel lane minimum widths and positioning of landscaped islands are compliant within the parking lot for one-way travel in accordance with section five point one three of the zoning regulations. Three, a combination of landscaped and solid fencing buffer is required between the parking lot and the adjacent residential properties that may not contain impervious surfaces or parking. A twenty-five foot wide buffer has been proposed on the eastern side of the property and a ten-foot buffer on the northern boundary. A six-foot vinyl privacy fence is proposed on the property boundary. The proposed buffers and screening are in compliance with section five eleven five of the regulations. Four, I recommend that the commission waive the screening and buffering requirement along the western property boundary as it borders the old street right of way for Railroad Avenue and the railroad itself. Section five point one one of the regulations allows for flexibility in certain screening and buffering requirements. Other staff comments. Economic Development, William Wallach, Economic Development Director, responded in support of the project on October fourth, two thousand and twenty four. Assistant City Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, submitted the following comments on October ninth, two thousand and twenty four. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses in the vicinity of the proposed activity that would require wetlands review for this proposal. Therefore, no wetlands permits are required prior to this application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, no landscaping plan was included. However, it is referenced in sheet thirty. Adding tree species info to sheet thirty would be acceptable as a landscaping plan. Per section five point one one, all required tree species must be native to the United States. Lighting, no photometric plan attached. Please include plan to show compliance with section five point one seven of the zoning regulations. Signage, no signage was included in this approval. All future signage must conform to section five point fifteen of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application has not been referred to the Conservation Commission. Engineering, no referral was made to city engineer Paul Hudson's on this project as he is representing the application before the commission on behalf of the city. Architectural Review Committee, this application was not referred to the ARC for comment. Torrington Area Health District, this application was not referred to the, to T H D for comment. Police Traffic, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldis completed his application review on October third, two thousand and twenty four, and stated that he has no comments on the application. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Becetta completed review on this application on October fourth, two thousand and twenty four, and offered no comments on the project. WPCA, Edward Towsey, WPCA Administrator, completed his review on October seventh, two thousand and twenty four, and stated that WPCA approval is complete. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette, completed his review of the project on October fourth, two thousand and twenty four, and offered no comments. Water, James Myers, James Myers, Torrington Water Company, completed his review on October fourth, two thousand and twenty four, and offered no comments on the project. Conclusion, I recommend, I recommend that the commission approve site plan number fifteen thirty five, one sixty and one sixty eight Church Street for site development for parkland, parking lot development, and multi-use trail construction in the DD Downtown District Zone by the city of Torrington with the following conditions. One, the commission waives the requirement for screening and buffering on the western property boundary along the railroad. Two, per comments from Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, the applicant shall label tree species for planting on sheet thirty in the final plans, and lighting plan shall be added to the final record plan set to comply with section five point seventeen of the zoning regulations for light trespass. Three, anti-tracking installations shall be maintained on the property entrance during construction. Tracking on the paved portion of the access drive or public street shall be cleaned at the end of each workday during project construction. Four, a zoning permit shall be required prior to commencing work on the property. Five, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the site plan sheet, sheet thirty, in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal, and live ink stamp. The Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
Thank you, Jeremy. Paul, what's the anticipated construction time if this thing moves forward?
Twenty twenty five. It'll be next summer.
It'll be started and completed?
The plan is to have the entire project completed by the end of two thousand and twenty five. And that's everything, that includes, that includes the road reconstruction and this, and this application.
Any commissioners have any comments or questions? Starlee, you have anything?
Yeah, real quick, what's the impact to the surrounding roads? Like, what's traffic gonna look like?
So John Street is going to be reconstructed to one way only going northbound, and that's to accommodate the ten-foot multi-use trail on the east side. And as far as traffic goes, we are upgrading Memorial Drive beside Christmas Village to allow for a wider entrance onto Church Street. Other than that, the impact will be minimal, the traffic where the teachers park, teacher parking in the back in the new parking lot is daytime use. And it will actually reduce the amount of traffic on Church Street where now the teachers have to walk across the street and where the drop-off and pickup is to the school opposite the Y. That's a fairly busy area right now. And I think having the teacher traffic moved over to Christmas Village will alleviate some of that. And then evening traffic, or like evenings and weekends for more for public use, will, I think it'll just help promote the use of the area, the Mason Street lot and any overflow. I mean, Christmas Village events can also park in the back. We don't see any, any great impact to the surrounding streets.
We expect it to be pretty full when Christmas Village is operating.
Right.
Yeah.
One question, so nothing's changing with the school playground corner? Nothing's changing with that, that's staying just as it is?
Correct.
And the Christmas Village entry for pedestrians is staying the same? You still enter on the front into that property and they can still go down the sidewalk?
Yes, there, yeah, the entrance of Memorial Drive, that's gonna get widened through there to make that entrance safer. And there will be a dedicated sidewalk painted along Memorial Drive right along the Christmas Village fence for, to delineate the pedestrian traffic through to the back. I believe that large tree in the front needs to be removed anyway, so that will widen that, that front, that front driveway. Make it safer. And then, you know, that teacher traffic will just be able to go straight down Church Street. So it's actually pretty close for them to get to school as well.
So the goal is also to have this finished prior to the first of December of next year because of Christmas Village.
Correct, yes. Yeah, definitely. Yeah.
We're good? Not a good one.
We are, I'm sorry, we are in absolute final design right now. We're ready to go to bid for the project. So we're gonna go to bid as soon as possible and award it this year, hopefully still. Yeah.
Thank you, Paul.
Like to make a motion to approve site plan fifteen thirty five. Applicant, city of Torrington Engineering Department, location one sixty and one sixty eight Midgen Avenue. Assessors map, one seventeen, block zero zero six, lot zero zero seven, and map one eighteen, block zero zero two, lot zero zero nine. Proposal, site development for parkland, public parking lot development, and multi-use trail development with the following conditions and recommendations. One, the commission waives the requirement for screening and buffering on the western property boundary along the railroad. Two, per comments from Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, the applicant shall label tree species for planting on sheet thirty in the final plans, and lighting plan shall be added to the final record plan set to comply with section five point seventeen of the zoning regulations for light trespass. Three, anti-tracking installations shall be maintained at the property entrance during construction. Track, tracking on the paved portion of the access drive or public street shall be cleaned at the end of each workday during project construction. Four, a zoning permit shall be required prior to commencing work on the property. Five, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the sheet, site plan sheet, sheet thirty, in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal, and live ink stamp. Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
Just for clarification, you have one sixty and one sixty eight Midgen on your sheet?
Yes.
It should be Church Street, just for the record.
Should I change it here?
Please, I'm just, my, my copy and paste didn't work, Logan. So I have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Hi.
Close, so move. Good luck, Paul, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to agenda, agenda item number six, new business. A, site plan application, number fifteen thirty seven, location one hundred Lawton Street. Applicant, Michael Boe, architect on behalf of one hundred Lawton LLC. Proposal is change of use of a portion of the building to small manufacturing and retail, parking lot, and ADA site improvements. Is the applicant in attendance, please? Come on up.
Michael Boe, architect, nineteenth Tioga Street, Torrington, Connecticut, representing one hundred Lawton Street LLC regarding this project for a change of use from manufacturing to light manufacturing and retail, which is a use that's allowed by site plan approval. And what we're doing is, this is a, this is probably one of the largest old factory buildings left in Torrington. It's a hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet. And we have a client that's coming in to lease a portion of the, the, the south end of the building, basically from here back down into here with some areas carved out that are, they're not taking at this time. Yeah, it's a two-story structure that would not be occupying any of the second floor. What we're doing for parking is we're providing the required handicap parking spaces with a little excess because we can. And what we've done is we've, this building from the front is at grade at basement level, roughly at grade, I should say. It's fourteen inches above the basement floor. At the back, we're about three feet below the main, the upper floor of the building. So what we're doing is we're bringing people into the lower level and then up an interior stair so we don't have to deal with weather conditions on the outside to access what is basically we're entering on the lower level and then going up a set of stairs to the upper level here. Just creating the lobby at the lower level. To an upper level here. And what Eric and Michelle Roy are doing is they're, they're developing a business that modeled it is for artisans so they can have small cubicles to show and sell their space, but also an area that they can actually fabricate things there. So what we're doing is we're creating cubicles along what we call the Great South Hall and then along the Great West Hall here. And then up an area in here, which is manufacturing and conference room and studio space. And then there's future studio space down further in this area in the building. The handicap spaces, there's a van handicap space, parallel parking, and then two normal handicap spaces with a handicap ramp that comes up and enters into this area here so people would have access to the, to the, to the space. Again, it's an old site.
This is the old Turner and Seymour, Mike?
What's that?
This is the old Turner and Seymour building?
It's the old Turner and Seymour factory building.
Thank you.
They had office space in this building. There is office space still available in the building. They had, Duck, Duck was on the north half of it, gone out of business. And so this was a good opportunity for these guys to come in and to bring new business. And Eric has had phenomenal success with getting people in line to, to become part of this.
Very good. Any commissioners have any questions?
It'd be very similar to the Whiting Mills in Winston and the hurling, the hurling manufacturing in Hartford there.
Yes. No, it's not really hurling manufacturing, I don't think. That's more, that's more like antique dealers. Is that what I'm thinking of?
Well, it's got some retail stores in there as well, yeah.
Right.
Air Salon and that.
Right. No, this is just basically cubicles that are eight feet by four feet deep. So you've got wall space to display things.
Yeah. It's similar to Whiting Mills.
Right. It's all open. Partitions go up to eight feet, the ceiling's at fourteen feet.
Have you ever been to Whiting Mills?
A long time ago.
Just curious, is it more parking? Because there's not a tremendous amount of parking there.
There's, this lot has over a hundred spaces on it, yeah. And their business is primarily weekends, their big business. So unlikely the factory's gonna be open.
And typically in a shop such as this, for example, you know, an arbitrary number, if there's forty booth spaces, it's pretty much absentee run, so to speak, where there's just a couple people in charge with
I, I think you'd have
cashiers and so forth.
Ask Eric that question.
Name an address for the record, please. Thank you.
Address two, you said?
Please.
Three oh two Cliffside Drive, Torrington.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the plan for this business is is similar to Whiting Mills, but more like what they're doing in Riverton, the shops at Riverton. So it'll be unmanned spaces. The vendors can set them up there. We're doing it a little different as opposed to just giving you floor space. We're actually making partition walls so everybody would have like their own store, like a physical store location. So that, once they set it up, everything is barcoded and is run by an employee that works there. So you could buy something from each booth and then it's dealt with in our software. So the vendors do not need to be there. It'll, it'll, the, the traffic that we'll be getting will be just consumers. And the other part of the, the thing that we're doing over in this area with the, the manufacturers, more or less a makerspace. Torrington has, we've done a lot of research, we've been planning this for, for a long time, and this just happened to be the perfect building to do it. There's so many people that live in apartments and condominiums in Torrington that if you wanted to take up a craft like woodworking, you really can't. It's hard to put a table saw in your kitchen, it's, it's not gonna happen. There, the closest makerspace that you could belong to is in Hartford at the old G Fox Building or in Danbury. So there's nothing, Torrington, for residents to go and be able So there's nothing in Torrington for residents to go and be able to utilize the equipment that we supply uh, to be able to manufacture things and then turn around in the very next part of the building and have a retail space to, to offer your wares to people. Um, there's a lot of people that, uh, it's expensive now to rent a place, you know, on Main Street, you know, if you're just making little widgets, a couple hundred dollars a month for a space in here versus a couple thousand. Our, our plan is, we're thinking of this more as a business incubator. Uh, I, my goal is to help every business that sets up a small booth to eventually grow to a point where they're going to want a bigger space somewhere else in town to have a standalone store. That's, that's our goal.
What's the fifty of the manufacturing part?
Uh, what was it, four thousand?
Of, of the, the manu, their, their portion of it, manufacturing was?
He just said that they were able to do, to do their actual craft, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say it's probably around four thousand, yeah.
So that maker sp, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike. So that maker space, if John Smith wants to go in there and do woodworking, they're kind of paying by the hour, so to speak, or?
Yeah, we, we were thinking about doing like a monthly membership. Uh, you know, I, we haven't finalized the total number yet, but let's just say it was a hundred dollars a month and then you would have, um, digital access to the door to get in.
Gotcha.
Uh, there's some equipment that we would, you would have to have certification to be able to train to use it. Some equipment will be locked out until you've had that training, so for safety purposes. Um, the entire area, both the makerspace and the retail space will be with, uh, have a lot of closed circuit cameras too, because security was concerned from a lot of vendors. Um, we had promoted this, uh, let's see, for about three weeks prior to, when, when we first made the arrangement with the landlord. And so far we have about thirty-eight vendors that have signed up saying they want to be in there. And the fun, the interesting thing was out of the thirty-eight, only three of them are from Torrington. All the other people are from outside of Torrington. So that was part of the goal was, uh, you know, we, we were searching for a building that we could get affordably enough to be able to make it affordable for the, for the vendors. And this building draws from, you, you know, it's a perfect spot, right, near the, you know, by Route Eight. So to go from anywhere from Farmington to as far as Bridgeport, we have people coming up. We have two people from Maata State, New Jersey that have signed up for booths. So it's, it's going to do exactly what we had planned and, and getting a lot of people to pre-sign up was, was pretty exciting to see that they saw the vision. Um, there's also one other component, we're going to do an online, so every vendor that has a space in there, we're going to generate a website page for each vendor that's included in what they're getting, so everything that's in their vendor space, you can also purchase it online. And then we will take care of the packing and the shipping and we'll ship it for them, or they can have it, uh, we'll, we'll take it and somebody can come in and pick it up. So it was, again, the websites scare a lot of people and the, the fact that we said we would offer it, uh, that, that was another big advantage to doing this. So these are the things that like, and looking at Whiting Mills or shops at Riverton or something. We, we evaluated what everybody's doing in the state and the, the concept's not new, but what I'm doing is taking the best parts of what everybody's doing and then adding a lot of bonus stuff to it. And, uh, it's, it's pretty aggressive, but the feedback has been amazing, like, people are so thankful, um, that we're entertaining doing this. I, I own Step Craft in Torrington, which is across the street from, uh, the courthouse. So we've got a pretty large building there and I've been doing that for eleven years in Torrington and we work with a lot of small artisans that, that's who buy us our equipment. So this is just a natural thing, uh, it's, it's just something my wife and I kind of wanted to do to give back to, to the community and, and hopefully help some small businesses grow.
Okay, one more question on the manufacturing part of it. So if you have someone who has to, who's doing ceramics or they have a kiln or woodworker, there has to be special ventilation, I would think?
Yeah, if you had a kiln there, there would have to be and, and that's not something I'm sure. We've had some people ask about putting a kiln in. I'm not a hundred percent, that's, it's not my area of expertise, um, so I would definitely have to do some consulting before we go and. Yeah, we, we, we do have somebody that wants to do stained glass, but that, that, I guess that's not, there's no real major equipment there. Uh, but anything that would need any special ventilation, obviously we would have to go through whatever, whatever departments we'd have to make sure we're complying with everything to, to be able to do that. I want to keep it simple to start and get it started and then as people tell us what they really want to see in there, um, we'll keep adding to it. We have enough vacant space in the building in this area here that we could easily expand into and take another five thousand square feet. So my goal is to, you know, when people come in and they say, what is your, what is your plan with the makerspace? Whatever you want, you know, you just, it'll grow into as much as people want to use it and that's our plan.
So ex, exterior changes, they say there's new exterior lighting, are you doing any other?
We're just, we are, we are like adding light fixtures.
Okay.
Uh, Nate, uh, said basically there is not a photometric required. What we're using is, we're using wall, uh, Rab light fixtures, just wall washers around the perimeter, they're all marked on the plan where we're, we're adding them. Uh, so everything is inbound.
Right.
Yeah. And basically, uh, let me just step back over here. The Gulf Stream runs.
Go ahead, sorry.
At the edge of the property.
Okay.
And then we've got the railroad at the back of the property all the way. And then we have residential down here on, on Lawton Street. We have the, the self-storage units that Mike Panett put in a couple years right here. And we have some residential back in here and residential across the street from the, the manufacturing, the other end of the building.
So future signage too, something possibly by the road or on the building, or that'll be in all their applications.
Yeah, actually, yeah, I've talked to Jeremy already and Nate about that.
You know, we can, we can go over that separately. If it's, if it's larger signage, we can do, um, in-house site plan approvals.
Any other questions? What do you remember, please?
Sure. Um, so before I start reading this one, I'll just note that I finalized this last week, so it's, it might not match up with some of the changes, but I'll read it in anyway. Uh, Michael Boe, Boe Studios has filed a site plan application on behalf of one hundred Lawton LLC for property at one hundred Lawton Street, assessors map one fifteen, block zero one two, lot zero one zero. For a change of use of a section of an existing building from manufacturing industrial to small manufacturing with retail. Property improvements include the proposed addition of three handicap parking spaces to the rear of the building, one with, one of which is a van accessible handicap space. A new accessible ramp is proposed to be constructed to the rear of the building. A new lighting is proposed to be installed around the building. Interior proposed changes are to add a series of small manufacturing makerspaces, retail vendors, meeting spaces, studios and offices. The total interior building area for the project is approximately seventeen thousand five hundred square feet. The property is currently owned by one hundred Lawton LLC, is five point four six acres in area and is located in the I industrial zone. The proposed use is classified as small scale manufacturing under section three point one, subsection nineteen point zero one. The definition of small scale manufacturing is included in section two point zero zero of the regulations and includes the design, production, processing, printing, assembling, assembly, treatment, testing, repair and packaging, as well as any incidental storage, retail or wholesale, wholesale sales and distribution of such products. The review of the application is guided by the site plan requirements of section eight point four. A plan has been submitted with the application titled new tenant space, one hundred Lawton Street, Torrington, Connecticut for Market Street Creatives, prepared by Boe Studio Architects, Torrington, Connecticut, dated October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, three sheets, revised to November first, twenty twenty-four. Um, this latest one is November eighth. Also included is an interior floor layout for makerspace, retail and office areas. Staff has previously met with the applicant and discussed this application prior to this meeting. In reviewing the plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. One, the site meets the minimum parking requirements for the uses on the property. Two, the proposed location of the new handicap parking spaces is compliant with five point thirteen point two for aisle access, but is not compliant with the regulations section five point thirteen point four D four for maximum slope of the parking space. Compliance with this regulation will need to be demonstrated as a condition of approval. Other staff comments. Economic Development, William Wallach, Economic Development Director, responded in support of this project on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Assistant City Planner, uh, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, submitted the following comments on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands activities within one hundred feet, one hundred foot regulated area around the Gulf Stream. This consti, constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, existing evergreen landscaping along Lawton Street is consistent with section five point one one of the zoning regulations. Lighting, a photometric plan is not required, non-compliant historic lighting fixtures shall be removed and proposed retained fixtures shall be fully shielded, full cutoff in accordance with section five point seventeen of the zoning regulations. Signage, there are no signs proposed as part of this application. All future signage must conform to section five point fifteen of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review. Architectural Review Committee, this application was not referred to the ARC for comment. Torrington Area Health District, Gabrielle Russo, T A H D Sanitarian, completed her review on November sixth, twenty twenty-four and offered no comments on the plans. Engineering, Paul Cunson, City Engineer, submitted the following comments on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. One, the paved area outside the property line on the west side adjacent railroad tracks cannot be considered in driveway width unless there is a deeded access easement. Please provide proof of access or revised design. Two, ADA five oh two point three point four, access aisles shall not overlap the vehicular way. Access aisles should be permitted to be placed on either side of the parking space, except for angled van parking spaces which shall have access aisles located on the passenger side of the parking spaces. The following revised comments were submitted on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Engineering comments based on revised plans dated ten thirty-one twenty-four. Three, two existing handicap spaces near Lawton Street do not meet ADA requirements for slope, will they be abandoned? Four, will the new proposed spaces and accessible route be on existing pavement and concrete or be repaved to meet ADA? Five, the proposed handicap spaces will not be accessible when tractor trailer is parked for loading, please confirm. The following final comments were submitted on, let's just say November fifth, not December fifth. Based on revised, uh, revised plan, site plan Lawton, P and Z ten eleven, or eleven one twenty-four. Uh, comment one does not apply, comment two does not apply. Comment three, show on plan, remove, paint or repave these existing spaces. Or existing slope is up to three point five percent and does not meet ADA. Comment five, the parked tractor trailers appear to not block the proposed handicap spaces, okay? Um, I'm just going to note that the plans were changed a couple of times. This was when it, these parking spaces were up in the loading dock area in front of the building. They were, they were, they were revised and moved to the back again. So a lot of those comments that Paul made don't apply anymore. So picking up police traffic, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus completed his application review on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four and stated that he has no comments on this application. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Becetta submitted the following comments on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four for the project. Good morning, as we move forward, I am requiring a full set of stamped sprinkler drawings, hydraulic calculations, two hundred pressure tests on the system since it has been altered, a sedimentation test. Also make sure the heads have been changed and are for the proper occupancy. The fire alarm will also need to be tested and a monitoring company is required. The proper exit signs and exit lights will also be needed. A key will be needed to be installed in the current lockbox. Thank you. WPCA, Edward Towsey, WPCA Administrator. Blessed you. Completed his review on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four and offered no comments on the project. Torrington Water Company, James Myers of the Torrington Water Company, completed his review on October ni, uh, twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four and offered no comments on the project. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette, completed his review on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four and offered the following comments. Stop work order issued on ten nine twenty-four. Applicant must apply for all required building permits prior to resuming any work. Permit applications must include all IBC, section one oh six, construction documents as applicable, prepared by a registered design professional. Conclusion, I recommend that the commission approve site plan number fifteen thirty-seven, one hundred Lawton Street. Change of use to small manufacturing, re, uh, small manufacturing, retail and site improvements with the following conditions. One, per comments by City Engineer Paul Cunsons and his, and this memo, the applicant shall update plans or demonstrate compliance with ADA parking slopes and grade requirements prior to certificate of occupancy approval. Two, per October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette, the applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project prior to commencing work. Three, per comments from Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, the applicant shall correct issues with existing lighting prior to certificate of occupancy approval. Four, a zoning permit shall be required to be submitted and approved prior to commencing exterior work on the property. Five, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer's or architect's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of site plan sheet SPP one for filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer or archite, architect's seal and live ink stamp. Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
Thank you, Jeremy. Mike, just a quick question, the, uh, the bathroom core that's there, you have one handicap bathroom on the end? In, on the plan?
On the, on the floor. Actually, there are two, there are actually two handicap bathrooms.
There's two in there.
Right.
Alright.
This.
And those are all existing?
Yeah, this, this building has more toilets than you can possibly imagine.
Thank you.
We probably have forty toilets.
There you go.
Between the two floors.
Enter in and exit out, right?
Uh, actually, there's.
But one from the lower level, stairwell up. You get into the property?
Well, just the one.
Right.
There's no exit off the back somewhere instead of the, Hilton Street or anything like that, right? Not Hilton Street. Yeah.
There's a, as far as exit from the site?
Right.
There is an exit to, from the other end of the property, out Brooker.
Oh, there is?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Starley, you good?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, y'all set, Mike?
Yes.
Good. Go ahead, Donald.
I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan fifteen thirty-seven, applicant Michael Boe on behalf of one hundred Lawton LLC, location one hundred Lawton Street, assessors map one fifteen, block zero one two, lot zero one zero. Retail and a portion of the existing change of use from industrial to small manufacturing with retail and a portion of the existing building. Revisions to parking lot, traffic flow and ADA building access with the following conditions and recommendations. One, per comments by City Engineer Paul Cunsons in this memo, the applicant shall update plans and demonstrate compliance with ADA parking slopes and grade requirements prior to certificate of occupancy approval. Two, per Oc, per October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette, the applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project prior to commencing work. Three, per comments from Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, the applicant shall correct issues with existing lighting prior to certificate of occupancy approval. Four, a zoning permit shall be required to be submitted and approved prior to commencing exterior work on the property. Five, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six, the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer's or architect's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of site plan sheet SPP one for filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer or architect's seal and live ink stamp. Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site.
I have a motion. I'll have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Good luck.
Okay, thank you very much.
Moving on to agenda item number six. B, proposed zoning regulation amendment, applicant Bruce Warley. Proposal amend section three point one subsection four point six zero. Gymnasiums and physical fitness centers to permit by site plan in the I P industrial park zone. We need to set a public hearing date. The suggested date is December eleventh twenty four. Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Moving on to agenda item number six, C, site plan application number fifteen forty two, location third, excuse me, one thirteen Richard Road, applicant Clarabelle Palasco. Proposal group daycare home in the R forty residential zone. Is the applicant in attendance, please? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Clarabelle Palasco, and the reason that I'm proposing this is because I would like to open more space in my daycare program. As of right now, I'm running a family daycare program, and my plan is to open up more space to be able to help families that they are looking for childcare right now. We see it is very challenging for some families to bring kids to a childcare center if they are in the age of six months to three years old. And I propose to open up three more spaces to become a group family childcare for now. With within the near future, I would like to become a childcare center.
Very good. And Commissioners, have any comments or questions so far?
Where is uh Richard Road?
Off of Peck Road.
Oh, okay, that's right.
Yep.
You have this? You have some sort of a group home there now?
Yes, I do.
For children, adults?
For children.
So family daycares with six or less children aren't aren't regulated at all?
Oh.
Yeah.
So you're adding, but you're adding space to the building or not?
I do. I were gonna be adding um a total of three hundred and fifty square footage to be able to gather more kids in area of my house.
But that would be under twelve, correct?
Twelve, twelve or less for for what for what they're applying for for this application to require it. You can still bump up the number of children, but not not in excess of twelve.
Okay.
Um if if I don't know if every any everybody remembers, but fall of last year, maybe we had to make updates to our regulations based on state statute changes that included the group care. Uh kind it basically said you can't require special exceptions for for group care in anywhere where a single family home is allowed. So it has to be by site plan, site plan, and that those are the changes that we think we made them in like September or October of last year. So that this is the first application we've had under that new regulation.
It's have to be done to the sanitary system coming?
So you have you have well and septic, right?
Yes, we do.
So you're and you're in process with with Torrington Area Health?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes.
So they're, yep.
Well, you're not adding bed. That's not gonna matter with the septic.
No.
Jeremy, you got a memo?
Yeah.
Please.
Property owner Clarabelle Palasco has filed a site plan application for property at one thirteen Richard Road, assessors map one oh one, block zero zero about block zero one one, lot zero two two for approval of a group daycare facility in an existing single family dwelling on this property. Interior property improvements are proposed to the basement of the existing home to accommodate the daycare use. A floor layout sketch has been included to show the arrangement of the daycare area. There are no exterior property improvements proposed. The total interior building area for the daycare is approximately three hundred and fifty square feet. The proposed use is classed classified as a group daycare home use under section three point one subsection two point four zero. The review of this application is guided by site plan requirements of section eight point four. To align with changes to state statute, Public Act twenty three fourteen, the commission modified the zoning regulations in November, two thousand and twenty three to allow group daycare homes in all residential districts by site plan approval. Group daycare homes are defined as a residence or facility which provides a program of supplementary care to not less than seven nor more than twelve children on a regular basis for a part of twenty four hours in one or more days of the week. Staff has previously met with the applicant and discussed this prior to this meeting. In reviewing the plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. One, the applicant intends on submitting a subsequent application for a full child daycare center in the future to allow for interior renovations to be approved for the daycare space. The applicant will first seek to gain approval as a group daycare facility. The daycare will be limited to no more than twelve children per day until an approval as a full child daycare center is approved through a special exception approval. Two, there are no minimum parking requirements or other exterior site requirements for for group daycare homes. Three, I recommended the commission grant a waiver of submission of a full site plan as there are no current exterior changes proposed on the property. Other staff comments. Economic Development, William Wallach, Economic Development Director, responded in support of this project on November fifth, two thousand and twenty four. Assistant City Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, submitted the following comments on November sixth, two thousand and twenty four. Uh wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses on or in the vicinity of this subject property that would require wetlands review for this proposal. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, this application does not require the submission of a landscape plan. Lighting, new and existing lighting must comply with section five point seventeen of the zoning regulations, which requires full cutoff lighting with no light trespass onto neighboring properties. Signage, there are no signs proposed as part of this application. All future signage will require a signed permit through our office and must conform to section five point fifteen of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review. Architectural Review Committee, this application was not referred to the A R C for comment. Torrington Area Health District, Gabrielle Russo, T A H D Sanitarian, has been in communication with the owner of the property through November twelfth, two thousand and twenty four to complete permitting. I recommend any any approval include a requirement to complete the T A H D approval process. See a copy of the discussion in the file. Engineering, Paul Cousins, City Engineer, completed his review on November twelfth, two thousand and twenty four, and offered no comment. Police Traffic, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus completed his application review on November fifth, two thousand and twenty four, and stated that he has no comments on this application. Fire, Deputy Fire Marshal Jared Howe completed his review on November twelfth, two thousand and twenty four, and offered no comments. W P C A, Edward Towsey, W P C A Administrator, completed his review on November fifth, two thousand and twenty four, and offered no comments on the project as there is no public sewer on the property. Torrington Water Company, James Myers of the Torrington Water Company, completed his review on November fifth, two thousand and twenty four, and offered no comments on the project as there is no public water on this property. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette completed his review on November fifth, two thousand and twenty four, and offered the following comments. Permits must be obtained from the building department for all work to be be performed in association with the proposed change of use. Conclusion, I recommend that the commission approve site plan number fifteen forty two, one thirteen Richard Road, to add a use for a group daycare home with the following conditions. One, the daycare use shall be limited to no more than twelve children at any time. Two, per section eight point four point four of the regulations, the commission waives the requirement for an engineered site plan as there is no proposed exterior property work. Three, per comments from Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, the property shall conform to all requirements in the regulations for lighting and signage. Four, per comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette, the applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project prior to commencing work. And five, all necessary approvals shall be obtained from the Torrington Area Health District prior to certificate of occupancy.
Thank you, Jeremy. What are your typical hours, miss?
Um six thirty to five P M.
And then just a quick question, where the exit doors are currently? That goes right outside the grade, right into the yard, or there's steps?
In the rooms that I'm in the area that I'm operating right now, we have an exit. We have a second exit through the stairs going to the first floor of the house.
Okay. All right.
The other area that we're proposing to open up for more availability, we we will be proposing to open an emergency exit in there.
Yeah. And just just a comment, I know a Fire Marshal didn't indicate. You know, I think when it comes time to a building permit, just something to keep in mind for smoke detection and C O two uh detection in this space. Smoke detectors, you know, once this gets built out, it's probably gonna be, you know. Does the Fire Marshal inspect it at all?
So I'm 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 honestly not sure how that works with their codes, but but they the way a lot of the statutes have changed on these is we're they're supposed to be treated the same as a single family dwelling.
Okay.
And unless you get over twelve children.
Right.
Then it's then it moves into another another commercial category. So I I it that's that's how it works for us. I don't I don't know what the other.
There's just something to keep in mind, you know.
Okay.
As you move forward.
So just talk with the fire with the Fire Marshal. Fire Marshal's office, just to be sure you're covered, that i- if you're doing work down here, the building department's gonna gonna see it anyway, and they're gonna make they're probably gonna ask you to do whatever's required by the code, so.
Yeah, so um good evening, everybody. So this house was recently renovated. I don't know. So and and the in the area where my wife is operating the daycare right now, uh they do have, um she has two areas uh that's combined around, you know, six hundred square feet right now.
Including the other floor? Yeah.
It's like about five hundred and seventy square feet where she is operating right now. And the addition to the basement will be another three hundred and fifty square feet. And what she which is working right now, yeah, we do have uh proper um uh fire alarms combined with um carbon monoxide. They're all connected throughout the house.
Beautiful. Okay, good. Thank you. Sounds good. Any Commissioners have any comments? Starlee, you good?
Yes, I'm all set.
Thank you. Go ahead now.
Like to make a motion to approve site plan fifteen forty two, applicant Clarabelle and Fabian Palasco. Location one thirteen Richard Road, assessors map one zero one, block zero one one, lot zero two two. Proposal add group daycare home used to an existing single family dwelling, section three point one subsection two point four zero in an R forty residential zone with the following conditions and recommendations. One, the daycare use shall be limited to more no more than twelve children at any time. Two, per section eight point four point four of the regulations, the commission waives the requirement for an engineered site plan, and there is no proposed exterior property work. Three, per comments from Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, the property shall conform to all requirements in the regulations for lighting and signage. Four, per comments from Building Official Kevin Gillette, the applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits for the project prior to commencing work. Five, all necessary approvals shall be obtained from the Torrington Area Health District prior to certificate of occupancy.
I have a motion. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Moving on to agenda item number seven, Correspondence, A, zoning and blight violation update. Could all have the memorandum in your packet?
Yep. If anybody's got any questions on anything specific that I that I might be able to answer, um Nate will be at the meeting in December. Uh so if anybody's sees anything on here that they want to directly address with Nate too, he'll be here at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Don't think I have anything. I don't think I have anything pressing. Um we resolved our, I mean, the big one really since last month is we resolved our our pig issue on Ufield Road.
That's good.
Where'd all the pigs go?
I don't know. Good question.
From your yard.
I know.
Okay.
All right, that one was about three years, three and a half years running, so.
Ten fifty East May Street isn't still not in compliance?
So mostly, um what I just have to get him to do now is the the only thing really left on there is to get the handicap spaces marked and signed, and then just uh give give a check on the slope of those spaces. Basically, that that truck is treated like uh the same as a brick and mortar building would be. So there has to be an accessible route to the to the truck or for, you know, that meets the slope and everything. So that's really the last piece of it. It's just getting getting the the ADA stuff settled. But it's um the the area's been repaved on um sidewalks in the area on on um the side street where the parking is has been repaved. Uh I mean, there's some kind of minor stuff to to finish with landscaping, but that can't be done right now anyway. They'll have to wait until the spring. I think it was just sort of a row of shrubs that needed to be planted.
Where is the one oh five Summer Street, the illegal boarding house?
That's the, yeah. Yeah, it's those it's, yeah, it's two two hundred Litchfield and one oh five Summer. That's been a long, another long term one we've been dealing with through our blight committee, but we
Facility?
It was supposed to, it was, well, it's, I mean, it's the same owner still. It just hasn't really gone anywhere. And um the the owner, like between environmental stuff, he's sort of skipping and you know, there's just been no, there's been no permits pulled. Yeah. Yeah. No, it's it's just a lot of uses that it's it. I mean, it's an unsafe building, first of all, and no environmental testing's been done. Oh, so that's the front part of the building that's kind of closest to Summer Street. We're fairly certain that it's being used as a boarding house, but we can't seem to catch people in there, so. Yeah. Yeah, so uh I mean, there's so many things going on there. We've we've got multiple departments working on that one and right, the situation we're in now is the blight fines have have added up so high, we're just gonna foreclose the blight fines at this point. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in blight fines. So.
And what's going on with the the old Taco Bell building? Is it definitely being grazed?
I, we haven't heard anything about that, but we're gonna start pressing that. The plaza itself is kind of a different story, but the the that building specifically, we're gonna start pressing. It's it's an abandoned building. It's we're gonna classify it as abandoned and say, you gotta take it down, you know.
See, stop the shot, it's all boarded up.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that that plot the plaza is a whole different whole different story, but but yeah, the least at least the Taco Bell building, we've been kicking around, kicking it around for a while. Absolutely nothing. No word. I mean, no word. So.
Well, rumor has it from the package store on the store, he's saying maybe they're a shop raid or like talking about Walmart expanding and then Price Chopper and Petco coming.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the simplest because it's already set up as a for for a retail store, so. Yeah, no, but nothing, nothing official.
Or is it convenient to go get groceries?
It is now. I have to go to Litch. I have to go to Litchfield now.
Close there.
It's a tiny little store.
Yeah.
Anyhow.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to agenda, uh agenda item number seven, B, discussion solar project on West Hill Road.
Yeah, I'm just gonna uh I'm just gonna recommend that we table this because we haven't seen any any plans for the project yet. Another one on West Hill Road. Yeah, well, so this is a subdivision that it was already a sub subdivision that was it Jim owns it. It's Jim's property. So it it was already a subdivision that was just never built out. Long and short, I haven't seen plans yet, but it's come to combine that subdivision back into one parcel and and do a do a solar development on it. It's right. It's right on the line. It's, yeah.
Or in the
Better baking by Beth is?
Yeah.
On the on the right side. You know, there's there's kind of a driveway there and it's kind of roped or gated off or whatever. That's that's it right there.
My memory, um. From my memory, um, when these solar farms come in, it is their responsibility when it is depleted that they take and dispose of all of that material.
So when the, especially ones that the Siting Council approves, they have to have a whole decommissioning plan. So that's, that's a requirement that the Siting Council has. So.
Disposing.
Right, but so they did, the good thing is they did change the statute on that, I think, two years ago. That what they used to do when they decommission these things is just cut them at ground, you know, cut the metal supports at ground level and then just leave them there. They changed statute a couple of years ago that basically said everything underground had to be removed too, so, which is great if you want, if it's, say, it's in a, in, in, uh, uh, an old ag field. It's all out of the ground, you can start using it for ag again if you want to, uh, instead of having to like dig up metal.
These bears are coming to your house?
Yeah.
Taking all their base.
I, I have, I have, uh, solar panels all around me right now, so.
And they're not re, they don't reuse them?
No.
No, they're just, they, they have a, yeah, they, right, and they replace these panels like piece by piece, is, you know?
Well, breaking them down from what I've researched is is not widespread. And really, there's very few facilities.
Recycling the panels themselves, yeah.
Plastic part, the glass part. And there's no regulations for the, um, for the, the, uh, the, the bad parts of it?
Right.
And why are they decommissioned? Do they no longer work after?
Well, I, I, yeah, to that, to that point though, the panels just kind of run their course. And it doesn't become financially feasible that, you know, to, to replace the whole field, you know?
And when it states that it is, uh, supplying to three hundred homes, is that in the neighborhood or?
Well, it's going back to the grid, so, uh, I know that so the one
No.
You know what I mean, I think they
I can tell you the one that we just went through on, on, um, Lover's Lane. That power is earmarked for, for Hartford. So it's not even being, I mean, I, you know,
See, basically
It goes into the grid, but then it's earmarked for Hartford.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah. I mean, there's, we get some limited tax revenue from it, but nothing like a, a, like a, you know, if they expanded the, like on Lover's Lane, if they expanded the condos, you know?
Right, right.
So.
Yeah, it's a little, uh, gray area, a little convoluted.
So.
Jim would still own that piece of property.
It's a lease, yeah.
He just leases it from, he gets leased, he leases it, okay.
I mean, they, they own, sorry.
They own the panels and they just lease the
I gotta get back to this microphone. Um, I believe the one on Lover's Lane is actually owned by the, the solar company, but it doesn't always work like that. So, I guess I'm, I, I'm trying to set up, we're trying to pin down a meeting time in the next couple of weeks with the, with the company so they can show us what they're doing. That's why I didn't
Lover's Lane or this?
No, this one. Um, so I didn't, I didn't think we needed to get too deep into it tonight without even seeing plans, but that's, that's the general what, you know, kind of the general idea of what's going on.
acreage?
It's like seventeen acres, I think, I could be wrong, fourteen acres, seventeen acres, but only like part of it's being used, four or five acres.
For the solar?
I, I think so, but yeah, I, I'll, I'll have a clearer idea when I see some, some, some draft plans, so we could just, you know, pick this up in December. I mean, basically, it's, it's, do we, we, we made a set of comments for Lover's Lane because there was public interest because of the condos next door. Question is, do we want to do it for this one too? I mean, we haven't had nearly the the, the outpouring that we had for the, for the last one, so.
Um, and again, it's just strictly comments because we can't regulate it.
Yeah. Right, and it, but it goes on the record, it's on, it's on the record for the, you know, with the Siting Council, so. Yeah. They, they might, I don't know. I have no idea. Well, we did ask for, the one practical thing we did ask for was a a, a, a much wider kind of vegetated buffer between, between where the panels were and the, and the condo. They were only gonna do a fence and like a line of trees. We, we asked for a twenty-five foot buffer like we would require for any other project. So whether they take that advice, I don't know. But, you know? Yeah, I mean, you would think though that, that the company would see that comment from us and, and just want to do it to be good neighbors, but we'll see. Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, nothing else.
Nope.
Time is eight fifteen, moving on to agenda item number eight, adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Night.
Have a good night.